Americanos?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Ms. McCready is absent. Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Ms. O'Day is absent. Ms. Mara?
Here.
Okay, notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 24th, 2020. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance. For the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, um, so we do not have Peter Vastola from Animal Control. He couldn't make it tonight. So Ed, it's you. You are up next. Ed English? There you are. Hey.
All right. So halftime, you would have to do all that good stuff. Thank you. So the farmer's market, I sent a letter and an outline. Tell me what, if you have any questions. I basically, this is the 27th year. We really, the only thing we've really changed is that we, the size of the market, but we're running it pretty much the same way as it's always run. And I do have to get the health department to sign, uh, sign off. I haven't, I sent, I sent the forms to them as well. I said, I haven't sent all the forms to Anthony yet. I don't have all the forms that, people always say, well, why don't you just continue the market right up to June, you know? I say, well, it takes a while to get all these things done. Uh, I mean, I don't think I'm gonna get all the forms if, if it's like every other year until like May 15th or something. Anyway, and then Anthony has to review them. The insurance has to review them. So, and, and so lately, uh, we've got the banner up. I think you see that in the train station. It was created by Rich and Sherry Moran. It really looks great. And so all those things are happening. Hopefully Mary Jane has time to do a video and all the other publicity. So all that's gonna go on in the background, uh, from now until the opening on June 5th. The band has already said they really want to come back. Most people said they want to come back. The big challenge this year for me, and I just had some great news with a couple of vendors today, that they're willing to share time. Basically Bedminster has siphoned off a number of people. But their most, well, our people are loyal to us, but they, they like to do two markets if they can. It helps them. Uh, and, and they also then, if they can, they hire other people to come to our market. Someone, someone wants to have coffee this year, which would be a boon. Tell me if I'm going on too much with all the details, but, um, uh, the, um, that would be great, but the health department has to sign off on that. Uh, so, and we, I just heard today from someone who's willing to share with someone else, uh, space. Uh, she, she's a, um, a gluten-free baker. We have a baker, but, so we went through this whole thing. She says, no, 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 I'm for people who, who, uh, you know, who really have restricted diets. They have diabetes or they, uh, you know, celiac disease. And so it sounds like a great, uh, compliment to our market. So that's what we're trying to do. Uh, I think we've, uh, I think we'll be successful, but that's, that's our goal and it takes time. So thank you for your patience. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Ed, just how many vendors do we have usually?
Well, in the winter, actually, we had 17 vendors. They didn't all come at once. I think we're gonna have at least that many, uh, for the summer because more people want to come. The question is fitting them in. Unlike other people who have a lot of space, we have limited space. And that also has to do with COVID. I mean, uh, we had something up at the pool because, uh, because, uh, I think, well, anyway, COVID, uh, we seem to be coming out of this pandemic, but a lot of people are saying, as Andy Fauci is saying, be careful. You can't, you can't predict it. So, so we just have to be careful. Uh, we, I, I'd like to get, um, I think we could comfortably fit 25 maybe, but, um, but that would be, that would be a real stretch if, if the restrictions come down for COVID.
Yeah. How many did we have pre-COVID? Do you remember?
Yeah, we had, well, at the winter market, we had 17. We had at least that many in the summer. And most of those people came all the time.
I mean, like in 2019?
Oh, 19, no, 19 would have been more like, uh, 10. I mean, it was, it's only been in the last three or four years that, A, the farmers are more comfortable with having new people there because, you know, they're concerned that someone's gonna take away their business. Rightfully so. Uh, and so I haven't been able to expand it that dramatically as we have the last couple of years.
Yeah, it's great. No, and thank you for all the time that you volunteer to make this work for us and for all the people that help you.
And I-
You do an amazing job.
Thank you. And I want to thank Jeff and Christine and you, Mary Jane, for talking, coming, and other people, uh, coming to the market. The volunteers were great. They make the vendors feel like they're wanted. And you know, that's what it boils down to. And then they're willing to be cooperative. They're not worried about someone stealing their business. Uh, so, you know, it's, it's working out.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
The gluten-free bakery, did you know if she's vegan too?
Yes. She, she actually, she actually is supplying and, and it's not a secret, but, uh, it's one of the things the farmers might be worried. No, I don't think they're worried about it, but, uh, so the, the empanada person gets the dough for the vegan empanadas he sells from this person. So that's how-
Got it.
Person, yeah.
I think that will draw a lot of people because I get asked that a lot. That's why I asked.
Oh, yeah.
Gluten-free and vegan baker.
Yeah, that's, that's unusual, uh, outside the farmer's market. So it's, it's great. We can get it. Yeah.
Yeah. You, you started to say that Bedminster had siphoned off some of our people, but they were sharing space. Are you, are you saying that they're gonna, some of our vendors are gonna spend part of the time with us and part of it with Bedminster? Or are we losing them completely to Bedminster?
No, I, I don't think anyone's, we've lost anyone to, we haven't really lost anyone. But, uh, but for instance, the coffee person will definitely be at Bedminster. They serve coff, uh, they allow, are allowed to serve coffee and we're not. For instance, that would, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Ed. We all good with this? No problems. We love it. Keep going.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Uh, can I have a motion for the minutes of March 22nd, April 12th, and April 14th?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Hi.
Okay. Um, we now have our open session for any items that are not on the agenda. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, um, please keep your comments to three minutes. Give your name and address. And Anthony will be holding up the timer just to show you where you are in terms of timing. And I see Heather has her hand up. Go ahead, Heather. Just unmute yourself.
Got it. You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening. Thanks for this time. Um, I wanted to take a few minutes to comment on the Autism Awareness Month resolution that's being put forward tonight. I had the pleasure of speaking to Councilman Hammond earlier today about this proposal and wanted to share some of my thoughts, uh, with you as a local resident who is autistic. I'd be remiss if I didn't begin this by explaining that there are many people in the autistic community who despise the month of April. Uh, while it seems like a positive and straightforward cause to spend a month raising awareness about autism, the fact is that most of this is taking place without listening to the voices of autistic people and without understanding what the autistic community wants or needs. And as a result, we often spend this month emotionally exhausted trying to be heard over the cacophony of misinformation and falsehoods that are out there. And I don't question the good intentions of anyone who participates and promotes these, um, autism awareness campaigns. I was happy to hear that this small town was actually addressing autism at all. But it is problematic when non-autistic people control the narrative about autism and autism education. And for the past 50-plus years, that's exactly what this campaign has entailed. In more recent years, the autistic community has made a push to change the term awareness to acceptance and making April Autism Acceptance Month instead. While most of us agree that there's still a need for continued education about autism, by and large, what we're looking for is to be acknowledged, valued, and accepted as we are, much like everybody else. So to this end, I just wanted to ask that the council consider inviting autistic voices to be included in the future when you're initiating proposals or plans, uh, that directly affect us. And I understand in this particular instance, there was a little bit of a time constraint to get it done, uh, in April, and it's too, too late to change at this point. Uh, but the future, please know that we, there are autistic people here in your community, uh, whose voices matter and who want to be heard. And while the identity language and descriptions of autism and autistic people in proposals such as these might not matter so much if you're not autistic, they do matter a lot to those of us who are. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and Heather, I believe you are doing a program at the library tomorrow night.
Yes, tomorrow night, yeah, breaking down the stereotypes about autism.
Yeah, I think that's terrific. I think I signed up for it. Hopefully I'll get there.
Thank you.
If nobody else noticed that, it's, um, you can just go, it's a free program at the library that Heather will be doing. So you can go to the library website and sign up. I think it's seven o'clock tomorrow.
Conflicting, is that one conflicting with the Communities in Crisis program?
It is. Yes, that's the same time.
That's a shame. Are any of the two programs gonna be filmed or videoed so that they can be accessed by?
I have to ask, I have to ask the library, because I know they run the Zoom session on their end, but I'll have to ask them about that. I'm not certain.
Yeah, it would be great if they could record it and then get, you know, we could get it posted. Because, yeah, I, I also wanted to go to the Community in Crisis, one on marijuana for parents and, you know, we get one night off and then you get a night when everything's all happening at the same time. Yeah, but thank you, Heather. That was, you made a great point. And, uh, we will consider that in the future. Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak? I'm not seeing any other hands, but, and we'll have another open session at the end. So I will close the public session. And we will move on to, uh, ordinances. So I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2021-1878. This is an ordinance, amending Ordinance 2020-1849, entitled an ordinance appropriating $11,000 from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund for reimbursement to the Somerset Hills Little League for renovations to the Kiwanis Little League Field by increasing the amount appropriated to $21,200. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? And I have to say, I was there for opening day and the fields just look incredible. They really do. They did a great job. Uh, and actually, and the kids noticed too, which a lot of times they, who was telling me something about the Burnsville bounce? You know what that is, Chad?
I don't. It's the first time I've heard that term.
It's something about the way, you know, the balls would bounce.
Oh, so, yes, so the, the Kiwanis bounce in the infield is a terrible thing.
Yes, which we don't have now because-
We do not have now.
Yeah. So, um, and would anyone like to be heard on this ordinance? Not seeing any, I will close the public hearing. Um, John, you're on open space, right? You wanna?
Uh, no, I'm not, but I, I just came from Kiwanis. I had dinner there actually, and it was, uh-
I think you're our best customer, man.
You know, that is my favorite. No offense to our great restaurants, but that's why it's so close to my house. It's great.
Okay, you want to move that ordinance then?
Uh, I moved a pass ordinance 2021-1878 on final reading and adopted as published.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
I've seen.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Oh, keep thinking, waiting for more names. We're good. Um, Jeff, would you like to introduce the next ordinance?
Oh gosh, I've gotta, let me pull up the, uh, the agenda. Give me a second here.
Jeff, would you like me to do it for you while you're looking it up?
Just give me, yeah, go ahead. Oh, here it is. Okay. I move that ordinance 2021-1879 concerning the Personnel Committee and supplementing and amending the Administrative Code as set forth in Chapter 2 of the Borough Code, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 10, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, um, so this is just the introduction. Anybody want to comment before we vote? Um, I think it's just really reorganizing that committee and define, well-defined, um, responsibilities so that it's more than just personnel. Um, what is new title?
It's gonna be Personnel and Organizational Development, I believe is the title. And the idea being is that we would set, um, uh, standards for individual departments within the borough so that eventually we can, uh, establish key performance indicators.
Yeah. Great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
No one's opposed. Okay, so we will have the public hearing, um, at the next meeting. Resolutions, we have 2197 to 21101. Anyone want to discuss any of those separately?
I just had some general questions about 21100, if we could pull that out. I don't have any objections to it. I just had questions.
Oh, well, go ahead, ma'am. We don't have to pull it out.
I guess I'm curious. I mean, it seems to be quite extensive how this particular group got chosen. I mean, so if, if we maybe we could learn how they are the right fit for this project and this group? Or is this really the only group that does this type of work?
There was in, um, the reports that were posted. Doug did a, um, study of three different companies and-
All right, I missed that piece. Okay.
I, I, I was gonna address that in the Public Works Report on behalf of Gina, who couldn't be here. But, yeah, there was, uh, an RFP and there were three bidders. And, um, I, I can go into more detail when we get to the liaison reports, or would you rather I do it now?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be interested because it seemed to be quite extensive what they were looking into. So if you could, I mean, just a little bit in the pros and cons. Look, I trust the committee. I just was curious when I was reading it, what other types of services were offered and what they looked at.
Sure. So these were three firms that deal with this, uh, hydrology engineering, uh, type of thing. And, uh, we were looking at both capabilities as well as cost, uh, from what we're looking at. And, um, we actually looked at the bidder who, uh, um, you're probably all familiar with Princeton Hydro, which was one of the bidders. The Rippling Waters, which, uh, was actually formed by one of the people who had been a principal at Princeton Hydro. They had a very comprehensive plan and they came in at a, at a lower price than, than Princeton Hydro. And the third vendor did not have a very comprehensive plan. So for us, it was not a very difficult decision to go with Rippling Waters.
Okay. That's, that, thank you. That helps me a lot, Jeff.
This is performing all those tests required for the dam project. Whether or not, you know, whatever the decision is about how to address the dam, there's certain tests that we have to do. Um, so that's a lot of what they're gonna be doing.
Yeah, they're gonna do everything from doing sort of undergrounds, uh, excuse me, underwater survey, trying to identify what the original stream bed was, to examination of the silt to see if it's contaminated and everything in between that would be required for us to make the decision, uh, about whether to keep the dam or to, uh, do away with the dam and also what the, uh, projected downstream effect would be.
And maybe, maybe I'll ask a different, a question a different way. So I want to make sure we're compliant to what we have to do to, to mediate the situation. But also I don't want to over-engineer it, if that makes sense. And I know that many times these governmental projects, they, they be, they become exercise and exercises in over-engineering it. And I just want to make sure that we're not there. Hey, Tom.
Hi, Mayor. May I just add something?
Yes.
That the, uh, the firm that we, I, I know exactly what you're saying. And the firm, uh, that we're recommending, we had reached out to other communities that had used them. And I had a similar sensitivity, uh, to that. Just, you know, stick to the meat and potatoes of what's required.
Okay.
And, uh, that's what we'll be getting.
Thank you.
I think most of it is, is DEP requirements and, uh, it's amazing the amount of tests you have to run, but, yeah. Okay?
Thank you. That helps. Thank you.
It's such a complicated problem, as I've discovered. I was there for the, the dam site visit. It's such a complicated problem that I don't think it, it's a matter of over-engineering it. I think the danger would be to under-engineer it.
Well, and Jeff, the, the proposal reads that way, right? It has a whole lot, you know, all, several different types of studies and different assessments that are being done and not, and being naive to the process and what's required. The, thank you for answering the question because you guys helped me there. So.
Okay, um, any other on that list from 97 to 101, or would someone like to move them?
Um, I can move them once I go back. I'll move Resolutions 97 to 101.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, and now we are up to Resolution 21102, which is adoption of the 2021 municipal budget. And I believe the Finance Committee, or, um, Tom, you have a presentation to-
Yes.
-share with us and the public, which will be posted on the website after tonight. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good.
Okay, and is everyone seeing that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so first, thanks to, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, council members, uh, O'Day, McQueen, and Donahue, and then to our CFO, who did a fabulous job guiding that process, Leslie Roberson. So, uh, in addition to all the municipal department heads who contributed to the goal that council set out for us. So, uh, I'm just going to, we, we went over these at introduction. And they were very much linked to our application for, uh, a new bond rating, which resulted in a AAA rating. They were interesting slides, so, um, I won't spend too much time on them other than to say that the state of our local economy is relatively healthy, uh, under any circumstances. So, uh, this slide here, uh, shows the comparative wealth, uh, of the community versus the county, the state, uh, and the nation, as well as the unemployment rate, which is, uh, lower than those other, uh, categories. And then, uh, another very important thing to point out is, uh, our top 10 taxpayers only represent 3.6% of our taxpayers, which means we're not overly reliant on any single industry or taxpayer, uh, which, uh, makes us stronger. Despite COVID and all the chaos that that brought about, uh, last year, we maintained a very strong tax collection rate of 98.91%. Well, it's been our average over the past five years and we've stayed there. Some very good news, uh, that we were happy to share with the assessors at Moody's is that our valuation has gone up this year. Uh, we've seen nearly $60 million in growth in our property valuations. And then the other thing, of course, is what does our debt look like? This top line of the bar of that 80, uh, $80 million up here, that represents what we as a community are allowed to, uh, hold in debt. However, these bottom bars in gray indicate where our debt actually is, uh, relative to where we can be. And that was also an extremely strong component in reaffirming our AAA bond rating. Just to share a little, uh, insight with you, I was looking today to see if there was a report I can point to indicating how many municipalities in the United States actually have this. The one I found is, uh, slightly dated by a few years, uh, but on that chart, it was less than 3.5% of all municipalities in the United States can boast that rating. So in summary, uh, we have a good tax base. We are not overly dependent on any single taxpayers. Uh, we have a good level of income. Uh, we have strong unemployment numbers, relatively speaking, a strong tax collection rate, a good fund balance, a low debt burden, and good liquidity relative to debt. So all in all, um, the broad economic outlook for the borough is strong. So moving on to the actual budget, um, this dollar, uh, this graphic represents, uh, how much the municipality actually utilizes of every tax dollar, or in this case, the $100 bill is collected. In other words, uh, the town, the, the borough does not have the option of not collecting taxes on behalf of everyone. We do. Uh, so when you get your tax bill, uh, just recognize that $22, uh, of every dollar, or of every hundred dollars comes into the municipality. Uh, and $2.50 of that is set aside for open space. But we do collect on behalf of the other taxing entities, uh, in the county. The finance team, uh, the committee, uh, looked at every single line item. They wanted to make sure that we weren't overspending anywhere, uh, that we weren't. Uh, and that also, very importantly, that we were being very disciplined in the budget document itself, that expenses actually represented what was spent. Uh, and then some reductions were made where things were being underspent or, or not as needed. So this is a summary of the budget, uh, in broad categories. So the total appropriations is $17 million, but that includes, uh, 20271 Mine Brook, which, uh, once we sell, uh, that is going to bring down a real, uh, functional appropriations to $15.6 million. This graphic, again, we'll post that online, illustrates generally how that money is divided, uh, throughout the community. A number of departments had to be, you know, consolidated to try to get this to fit on one page. This is a summary of our revenue. Again, the revenue would be approximately 17 million. But again, we're gonna take out the revenue that we're getting from the sale of 271 Mine Brook, that portion of that property, which is gonna remain residential. Uh, so the revenues now balance out appropriations at $15.6 million. We're also proposing a number of capital ongoing improvements, uh, continuation of the road improvement program. The green lines on this map indicate the roads that have been completed since, uh, 2014. Uh, the pink represents, uh, what will, what is on the board for this coming year. Okay, uh, we're gonna, and then of course, we have to continue to, um, make investments in our vehicle fleet, roof repairs, and various traffic safety improvements throughout the community. So, uh, in summary, uh, the budget we're proposing calls for a, uh, a slight tax increase of under, uh, 3%, which was what the council had set out for us to accomplish, while also maintaining, uh, decent reserves. And, uh, if we look up here, our estimates, again, not, not knowing where the other entities fall, but just making some estimates, it looks like the overall tax rate ought to remain relatively stable. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to members of the finance team, uh, if anyone wants to add anything.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple, Tom, if that's okay. First, I want to say thank you to you, Leslie, uh, the rest of the municipal government. I know that this budget cycle was difficult for a bunch of reasons. Number one, coming out of an uncertain year, which was COVID. Um, I, I think even in doing so, many of the departments have increased their revenue, which helps us quite a bit. And I, I know that there were many departments as well that we did reduce their budget or maintained a lot of tightness around it. So thank you for working for us. I think the end result was fantastic. And I hope our borough residents appreciate the- And I hope our borough residents appreciate the fiscal responsibility that we took to this and ultimately what I think will be a budget that accomplishes what we need and also maintain the top and bottom line. So, thank you.
You're muted, Mayor.
Trying to be kind here. Thank you. We will post this on the website, so you can take a little more time with it. If you want to go through the numbers or look at it, or if you have questions, you know, we're happy to answer them or address any issues anybody has, but I think a big thank you to the finance committee and Tom O'Day, who's not here, who chairs it. It was not, I think, as Chad said, it was not an easy chore this, not that it's ever easy, but there were extra challenges this year. So thank you for, I think they met every week since March.
So it started in October.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for all the time you put into this.
Mayor, could I just add one last thing? Just in regard, I know Tom showed the, the sort of the the overall debt plan over time. I think it's important that our residents also understand that there is a very thorough, and I'm using the word thorough, and thoughtful debt reduction plan that is in place with a spending plan associated with it to maintain the spending that we need over the next ten years, to really put us in a very positive fiscal circumstance as well. So there's good news and I, there's good news now, and I think there's more good news to come. And those are things that actually Tom usually says, so I'll use his words. There's good news now, and I think there's more good news to come.
Yeah, and then one of the things that you need to draw attention to is the two point nine percent tax increase municipal share. It actually includes one percent for debt amortization, which is part of the debt service plan. So functionally, it's a one point nine. So we're trying to be prudent and forested all at the same time.
John, John, what you're referring to is the referendum that approved the additional spend on the roads.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, that was approved by the residents. It was the referendum. Yeah. And I think we've just finished using that. Yes, this is the last year.
Uh, next year.
Next year.
Next year, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Chad, I'll let you move that resolution.
Sure, let me move, give me, what is the resolution number?
Sorry, we need, we need a public hearing on, on this one before we move it.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. It is a public hearing.
That's right.
So we were already done. Okay, anyone in the public would like to comment on what you just heard on the budget? I am not seeing anybody. Nope. Okay, then I will close the public hearing.
So then I will move that resolutions, resolutions twenty one, one zero two be adopted.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mara?
Yes.
Uh, next we need.
Hold on, hold on. John, does the mayor have to vote on this? No, okay.
No. Is that another, we had, we had four votes, yes?
Yeah, no.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was panicked early on.
Don't panic. It's okay, we're good. Uh, next is the capital improvement fund, which pretty much goes along with the budget that we have to introduce. So Chad, would you introduce that?
I'm happy to, Mayor. I moved it ordinance twenty twenty one eighteen eighty appropriating four hundred thousand dollars from the capital improvement fund for various equipment as listed in the two thousand twenty one municipal budget. Be introduced by title, passed in first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning seven PM Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty one.
I'll second.
Okay, before we vote on that, do we have a list or is it in the packet of what, what is in there?
Tom Beach, one fifty three.
Yep.
Can you read Christine?
Yeah.
Sure. Oh, Chad, you can go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go, you have it in front of you, Christine.
Yep, so you want me to read each department? We have department police and these items are all police items. Police SUV, fifty thousand, police radios, twenty seven thousand, body worn cameras, sixty thousand, emergency medical equipment, ten thousand, traffic control equipment, nine thousand four hundred and fifty. Then emergency management department, O E M equipment, office of emergency management equipment, ten thousand. The next department, public safety, technology, fifteen thousand. Next department, building and grounds, library, slope, shingled roof, a hundred and ten thousand. Streets and roads, dump truck, eighty five thousand. Public works, Claremont Fieldhouse roof, nine thousand. And then administration, various capital items, fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty, for the total of four hundred thousand.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's a lot to accomplish in a year, so, yeah.
And just a point, Mayor, about the body worn cameras. And Tom, if I misspeak, please correct me. This was a, a new requirement that's now come down from the state as they're looking to continually improve policing in our state. So this was an item that was, is now mandatory that we move towards. Is that a, a true? And we just talked about this the last meeting. That's, that's, was a mandatory item, right, Tom?
Yes, it's, it's mandatory. State also indicated without commenting on exactly how much, but there will be offsetting grants, so some of that money will be coming back to us.
Yeah, they have been getting some pushback as, you know, passing another unfunded mandate. So hopefully there will be funding coming. That would be great. So, all in favor?
But just, can I just make a quick comment? I'm in favor, but I just, the fifty thousand for the police SUV. It's my hope that this will be the, the last conventional vehicle we buy. We're gonna have a proposal coming out of Environmental Commission about hybrid vehicles for police. So that's a, that's another moving trend in the state and there hopefully will be grants for that as well. So just want to throw that pitch in.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? None of the extensions, we're good. Um, oh, it's my report now, okay. So, um, we did have April thirteenth, our first Memorial Day planning meeting, which was with recreation downtown Burnersville. And, you know, starting to work out what that's going to look like this year. We have another meeting later this week. We're looking to combine, you know, the veterans as well as the unveiling of the banner. So that is on its way. Olivia Manning and I checked the site, just where, you know, where the banners, if you notice, they were power washed today. Unfortunately, Olivia had already hung up the, the sponsor banners, but they'll go back up. It'll be painted, I think, tomorrow or the next day. So it'll be all ready for installation probably in mid-May. We spotted a lot of garbage behind the stores in the Ammerman Lot and down by the tracks. And Jeff Price is on top of that. He's reached out to New Jersey Transit because some of it is their responsibility as well as some of the store owners, because you don't want to look down while you're looking at the banner and see garbage down there. So I also attended the twenty twenty one Greater Somerset YMCA Spirit Awards Ceremony, which was all virtual this year. Half of the Somerset County governing officials meeting, because then we had our special council meeting that was really well attended on our downtown redevelopment and anyone in the public. That is on our website if you want to see that, the presentations that were made. The sixteenth was opening day of girls softball at Kiwanis, so I was there for that. Christine threw out one of the first balls. On the seventeenth was Little League Opening Day, and I went down for that ceremony as well. Great turnout. It was a better day than the night before. And it was also the day of the stream cleanup and thank you, Christine, for being the organizer of that. A great amount of volunteers, a lot of work got done, a lot. Do you know what the poundage was yet? Did they give you those numbers?
Uh, this year we had to have four sub sites.
Yeah.
So they're gonna total that out and then Rowdenheadwaters.org will give a big report in the next coming weeks with the total pounds, but we had over eighty volunteers.
That's terrific. Yeah, it was a really, really good day. On the nineteenth, we had the meeting on the, at the dam with representatives from the Environmental Commission, New Jersey Fish and Wildlife Services, the Nature Conservancy and Rowdenheadwaters and our engineers, which I think was really productive to get input from all the people who have expertise in what needs to be done to remediate the dam. So I think that there was a really, Jeff was also there. I think it was a great meeting and hopefully we're moving ahead with that. I attended a Somerset County Tourism Meeting and the county is starting a film commission. So the guest speaker was Janice Kovach, who is the mayor of Clinton and also the president of New Jersey League of Municipalities, and she's the founder of the Hunterdon County Film Commission. So she is helping Somerset County start its own film commission. And there's a movie being filmed in Bedminster this year. I'm trying to think who the, was somebody famous in it too, but it was in the paper. So, you know, New Jersey is now back in the film business. The cyclocross first race, John and Bob, what a great job the two of you did getting that organized. It was, it went so smoothly. I think everybody had a great time. It was freezing out, but it was just, it was really exciting and I think you're gonna have a great program there. And it was nice to see that property being used while we're still working out, you know, where it fits into our recreation plans. Kurt, the cultural arts committee also met. We are sponsoring a trivia night on May fourth. May the fourth be with you. The subject will be Disney and Disney now owns Star Wars, so it'll, that's how it'll tie in. And Mr. T will be entertaining during the breaks. It's a fundraiser for the mural. So I think it's like five dollars for a family to get the Zoom link and it should be a lot of fun. So, and you may have seen it already advertised on downtown Burnersville's website, but put that on your calendar. The county call this week, there was this, well, and it just came out today. There will be guidance on pools, graduations and proms coming from the governor's office. I think today he just was announcing outdoor limits and, you know, venues and that kind of thing, but we should have graduation coming later this week. And this past Saturday was the last painting day for the mural for residents. Today, I think, was the last for the students. And it's, it's coming along beautifully. It's gonna be quite a, I think people will be very impressed when they see it. And thank you, Olivia, for pulling this all together. She's here. So that's my report. Any questions?
The actress is Naomi Watts.
That's it. I knew there was somebody famous that was making a movie in Bedminster, so we have to get Burnersville next on the. And the nice thing about the state opening up again to movie production is besides the revenue for the state, if they're filming in your town, you're gonna have all that revenue for the restaurants and stores because, you know, that you have that whole crew trying, you know, the hotels. So hopefully maybe we'll get some, maybe some of our beautiful buildings will be in demand. Tom, your report?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, first, just want to make the council aware that we received an offer of five thousand dollars in prizes to distribute at the cross races.
Wow.
From Trek Store. And in order for us to be able to accept this and then distribute it on Wednesday, we would need a motion from the governing body to accept those gifts. And their sunglasses, supplies for bikes, tires, things like that.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Is it too late to be in the cyclocross with my beach cruiser?
Not absolutely not. You're more than welcome.
I'll enter that.
I'll probably die.
You could see that, you know, getting off the bike, carrying the bike, running up a hill this steep in the mud. It's amazing what they do, really. Right, Tom? I mean, we were just in shock watching this.
I was, I was embarrassed.
So, Tom, you need a motion? Do you need one this evening?
Right now?
Motion to accept, yes, please.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the donations from Trek for the cyclocross.
I'll second. Or you can say.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
So just a couple other things. Household cleanup is May fifteenth. Residents can bring their various items to the compost facility. Please look on our website for more details on that. Reminder that pool registration is open along with some spring sports. I wanted to share with council that we had a good staff meeting today with our new, with Leah Horowitz, our new program, programming assistant in recreation. And one of her responsibilities is going to help develop a social media strategy, not just for recreation, but also for the municipality. So please, I'm not going to set expectations too high at this moment, but please keep an eye out for our Borough Proper Facebook site and others. And you'll be seeing more of government in action type posts.
Right.
And then I would be remiss not to summarize a little note that Chief Valentine sent on to me. It was in the departmental reports. I'm gonna leave the names and details out, but a husband and wife wrote to us, one of the individuals had suffered a severe medical problem. Our team responded. They called nine one one. It happened on two occasions. Our police responded each time to administer oxygen and preliminary care before an ambulance arrived. I don't know the names of all four patrolmen, but I would like them to know they were instrumental in saving the life. And the work they do is vitally important and very much appreciated. Please forward our thanks. So I just wanted to share that with the community. And that's it for my report.
Thank you.
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, I saw Bob's, I think, I see Bob in the background here, post around the pool and he alluded to rather cryptically concerts and events in his post. And I very promptly got a, a question from a citizen as to what was planned in regards to concerts and events, if we had any clarity.
Bob, uh, are you, okay, can you comment on that?
Yeah, so, um, we had a, an amazing local band play, The Ice Cream Social, last year. The mayor is there.
Great.
And this was the closest thing I think we had to an event in Burnersville and it went over really well. So we're gonna do that four times this year with four different bands, at least once a month, afternoon, evening type things.
That's great.
We're going to do some cornhole and spike ball tournaments, some kind of distance, you know, leisure games. Those are quite popular, get some teams out there. And then we have some theme days. We're looking at throughout the year, different types of activities associated with days. You know, I talked about Christmas in July. It's gonna, it's gonna light up the pool with some lights, those type of things. We're gonna do some activities like sliding down the hill, a little slip and slide like sleigh riding. You know, we're gonna bring some theme days. Leah is, comes from the Disney world. She worked for the company. So she's gonna have some things ready to go as well, just different unique opportunities at the pool this summer. They're gonna have some fun and follow the guidelines as well. But based upon the response we got from the one concert we held last year and the people did distance, so we played it loud enough they could, it could go throughout the pool. It's a great social distancing activity, anyone that was there.
Yeah, Bob, that sounds wonderful. I don't know if there's any, anything that you can provide on social media that helps.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't know how enrollment's going, but I, those are exactly the kinds of things that I know you've been talking about and I, I'm personally really excited about, so thank you.
Yeah, during this last week push here, we're going to promote some more of that stuff. We'll come out with a couple more flyers leading up to Friday. Everyone, if you're dropping off checks, you can do it over the weekend too for the. Everyone, if you're dropping off checks, you can do it over the weekend too for the uh early bird, but uh, last time to sign up online will be Friday.
Yeah, I, I love the um, I love the whole band thing. And I was, I was down, um, had, had the opportunity to have dinner at the station Friday night, late. And they had a band playing and I, I, there aren't a ton of opportunities in surrounding towns to go listen to live music. And I'm very thankful that we have a lot of it in our town.
Do you have to be a member of the pool to go to the uh, those four uh, the social events or, or the tournaments or things?
Uh, that's, that's the plan right now. Uh, you know, looking forward to the future when, when there's no regulations and all that type of thing. Um, you know, we'd love to expand and hold some nights where we invite the public. But uh, according to regulations right now, I think that's something that the pool members are really gonna enjoy. Um, we, we have a good number of pool members coming back, so they'll be able to hit the right capacity, right distancing. We'll plan it out for them. And then uh, I think this will evolve uh going forward.
So there, there's a plug for early registration to, to the, for the pool, which I actually saw in the bubble. So uh,
Yes.
You know, sign up for the pool to get more than just water.
Yes.
Uh, is, is it ice cream, the, the, are there gonna be four ice cream socials or you're just?
Just, that was the model that, that, that worked out well. Um, they were excellent, uh, local band. We're gonna try to do that same type of thing. Um, highlight some of the uh people from the community. We're also running a, we have a lot of summer camps right now. Uh, so we're doing a music summer camp where they are, we're working with a uh, vendor in Basking Ridge. The first time they're doing a camp, they just opened up a place in Burnsville. Um, so we're gonna try to get those kids that do the camp to maybe perform at the pool, um, kind of a school of rock type thing. Um, so it's gonna run the gamut of just um, you know, younger bands, local bands, maybe some traditional kind of cover bands. But we're gonna try to get that, that going on.
Fantastic.
Great, thank you, Bob. Sounds great. And I get a free membership. So do you, Jeff?
Gee, thanks.
What about me? What does Jeff get one for? Oh, I see.
Five, yeah, we get free ones.
As they say, Chad, age before beauty.
There are some advantages. Okay, thank you, Bob. Sounds great. And uh, again, thank you for the recycle, putting the Cyclo Cross together, you and John so quickly. I mean, that was.
A- a- actually, I probably ought to make a, we ought to make that plug. I don't know, Bob, if you wanna make an announcement, but I forget what the age is. But if, but we do make accommodations for seniors for the pool.
Oh, yes. So uh, ages sixty-two and over, if you're a Burnsville resident, uh, pool membership is free. Uh, encouraging seniors to come back. Uh, it's a nice environment. Everyone's vaccinated. Uh, I think it's gonna be good. Last year, a lot of seniors took off, understandably so. But um, we'll be able to offer some outdoor activities for seniors as well. I might get back into the bingo and, and different types of things like that.
So if the senior is over sixty-two, but their spouse is not, um, how the hell do you work that?
Um, so they can get a uh, a single membership and then their spouse could go um, using the senior membership. So you don't have to go the whole family route to do that.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to accept the department monthly reports?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, we have Jackson.
Aye.
Nope, there's the other one. Um, I don't think you, you have anything to add, Jack? Are you good?
I'm good. Unless anyone has any questions.
Okay. All right, um, do the council committees, public safety, John?
Oh, we did not meet, although we will this month, because a couple of items were brought to attention.
Okay, um, finance, I don't think we need another word from.
No, I think we've done enough.
Um, personnel, which is now, what is it, government, organization and personnel?
Organization, personnel, organizational development.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to what we already discussed is that we're actually in the process still of uh developing our table of organization, uh, but not just uh, uh, actually, like when I say we, I'm talking about our business administrators really doing all this, but um, uh, listing the tasks and the process for each office. So we're really uh taking a very business approach to this. And uh, um, we also reached out to the Rutgers Group to see whether we can uh uh, resume the strategic planning project that we had had uh, uh, pre-COVID. Uh, and that's something that the committee uh will work on. How do we can, can continue that process?
Great, thank you. Uh, Public Works, Gina's not here, so either Jeff or Christine.
Yeah, uh, uh, Gina texted me and uh, we, we talked and uh, let me just give a brief report on her behalf. So Public Works met on um, April twentieth. As you mentioned, Mayor, we had the uh dam remediation has been at the, the top of uh, our thoughts at the, at the time. And there was a meeting on April eighth with uh New Jersey Transit about determining uh what their uh uh involvement is in terms of how much of that territory, how much of that land area that uh they're responsible for. Uh, and then on April nineteenth, we actually had the site visit, which uh, you described. We had the three proposals that we, we talked about and uh recommendation to go with the hydrology group at uh Rippling Waters. The next step after this would be to do the engineering studies, uh, and then the self-examination. The uh Polo Grounds walking path uh requires two different permits. Uh, one, one to DEP, one for construction to the state, and that, uh, these have been submitted. And then once they're obtained, uh, uh, the next step would be cost analysis. Uh, we anticipate that that should be somewhere around June, July, then we would send things out for bid. And then the anticipated uh start of work on the walking path would be September uh or October. Uh, Burners Avenue, um, it was a, a matter of discussion in terms of the scope of the project, and that's yet to be determined. Uh, so that would determine whether we uh move on that in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. The thinking though is to uh do perhaps a little bit more extensive project to, you know, get something that lasts uh, for a considerable amount of time and would reinvigorate that, that area. And so it may be the focus uh, uh, for the twenty, twenty-two grant.
Yeah, uh, Jeff, if I can sort of add something. So at the finance committee level, uh, we did discuss the same item. And from a finance perspective, Tom, I believe we officially moved the, the expenditure into next year in line with a more extensive repair.
Yeah, so uh, the, the great minds think alike. We're both moving in the same, same direction. Uh, Washington Corner Road work is in progress. Uh, next up would be the projects on Crestview, uh, which is currently under final review. And uh, the Chestnut, which is uh out uh, out for bid, that's it, sorry, out for contract. Uh, the road survey had been delayed um, due to uh either both weather or, and or COVID. But that's been resumed and should be uh completed uh, uh, hopefully by the end of next month. Uh, the library, lower level of the library generators, um, the contracts have been received and the equipment has been ordered. Um, the uh, last thing would be the uh Quiet Zone Train Noise um, Subcommittee, which is I guess a subset of uh Public Works. The main, we would have learned a lot actually about this. We've had a lot of conversations with uh New Jersey Transit and also with the FRA, that's the Federal Railroad Administration. And so the next step, though, all these, all these discussions have been verbal, uh, we have to actually write a formal letter of intent, which doesn't bind us to do anything, but it would then for uh, I guess force might be the right word, would require, I guess is a better word, require uh FRA and, and New Jersey Transit to give us the advice that they've given us, but in writing. So then we would have something uh, that knowing how, what, what the art of the possible would be. And um, we could then start determining what the costs would be. There are six crossings, two of them are public, two are private, and two are private with public access. And each of those three categories have different rules. Uh, so uh, once we, we submit the letter of intent, um, we then get written replies back from the FRA. We'll be able to take the next step to determine um, what we could, could or could not do i- in that regard. Uh, and that is uh the report.
Actually, that's a mayor's ad hoc committee, the train noise.
Ah, that's correct, sorry.
Um, whatever. Uh, Jack, I think I forwarded you that um, what they were asking for, letter of intent.
We modeled the letter of intent actually after uh, the similar letter that had been submitted uh to the FRA by the Morris Township.
Yeah, I think I sent it to Jack to look over just to, so is that something the council has to act on at some point?
It, they will, yes, before it's said.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I just add one other thing? Just going back to the proposed walking path at the Polo Grounds. We did get a nice, in Public Works meeting, a nice aerial view, and you guys have it in your reports. Is that something we can put on the Borough website at this point? Just cuz, cuz um, uh, I do get a lot of questions on, and I like to be able to share it.
Absolutely.
It's a one, the one page, just the proposed, the aerial view of the path. Thank you.
Google Maps type view, yes, that's very good.
Um, where are we? Okay, so thank you for that. Uh, Land Use Committee, um, our administrator has been reaching out to the, to um, developers to set up, start setting up individual meetings with them. So um, we'll be doing more of a deep dive into their proposals and what we need from them to help the council make a decision. So that will be happening, I think, next week.
This week, yeah.
Um, I didn't see Jeff Price on the meeting tonight, so um, I don't think we have anything from zoning. Um, the other thing I forgot to mention in my report is I will, I'm forming another, um, an ad hoc committee in kind of going along with the um organizational development. That will just be um, the administrator and Councilman McQueen and myself to gather. We asked all the committees for their mission statement and their responsibilities. So the three of us will be going through that. You know, looking at how the committees are functioning, who's doing what, and really looking to kind of streamline that whole process. And make sure that on the website, it's clear and that we have, um, you know, kind of a cohesive message that we're giving to the public on what every committee does and why it does it. And see if there's ways we can get, you know, work them together or uh have kind of cross meetings or whatever. So um, we'll be getting that going. Okay, um, Liaison Reports, did anybody meet with their committees?
Um, so we have, the, uh, Planning Board did meet and the item from that meeting is part of the new, new business agenda this evening. So there's probably not a whole lot of point in me going through that. Now I can do it when we get to the new business.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, uh, I, I just want to step back a little bit to talk about the Housing and Zoning Report.
Yeah.
Uh, there is uh, there is a project uh in the works that uh we're working on. We noticed that uh, some buildings in the downtown area are d- doing some improvements, but they're pre-existing buildings, they're not new buildings, and they're sort of superficial improvements. So what we're gonna be doing is developing something called a pattern book. Uh, so it's a digital pattern book where it, it basically says, uh, if you wanna contribute to what, what the broader vision is for the downtown area. Uh, he, here, here is a link and it gives you images of what's encouraged and what's discouraged. Uh, the planning documents provide nice street views of what we're trying to achieve. But sometimes it's hard to look at the language of the code to say, you know, what do we mean by vertical versus horizontal windows? What do we mean by a cornice? What do we mean by paint shades? And so we, we're gonna say discouraged, encouraged. So some towns or planning departments have done that. So we're starting that uh project this week.
That's great. Yeah, I think that'll help a lot. Plus, yeah, you know, it, it's good for keeping the town looking the way we want it, but it's also, you know, a lot of business owners struggle with what to do. And it's nice to have somebody tell you, here, pick this. And, you know, it makes it easier for them as well. So I think that'll be a win-win. Thank you for that. Um, anyone else have uh Liaison Reports, Christine?
I have library, which was also in the monthly reports. Um, but I would like to highlight some of the events that they have coming. Uh, because our library essentially is filling in the void for a lot of the kids who don't have a full day of school at the moment, including preschool movement. Um, uh, there, there's a poetry event this week on Wednesday. The conclusion of Poetry Month. They have um, also for the older crowds, if you know anyone who's uh looking for connection, there's chair yoga there every single Wednesday. So just encourage people to look at the library's uh offerings. Um, we mentioned earlier the autism talk that's taking place tomorrow, sponsored by the library.
Great, thank you. You're still doing a lot of that virtually, right? The uh chair yoga and those are virtual.
One of the things that's in person, May fourth, is the outdoor safari. So I'm very curious about that. It looks like um, now that the restrictions are starting to get a little bit uh, less stringent, we can do some fun stuff in person. So.
And the weather.
Yeah, that's for younger kids, Chad, so you can't go. Ages four to eight, but you can bring your kids.
Uh, Jeff, you had something?
Uh, for the Environmental Commission. Um, so the Environmental Commission met uh April twenty-one, it's been very busy. Um, hopefully people were able to come on out this past weekend uh for the uh sapling and bush uh free giveaway. And at the same time, do uh get, get a kit for your uh well testing. We got about twenty people picked up the well testing kit. Um, this is really important at the, the Environmental Commission, we had a, a really good presentation um, from uh Mara Tippett, who is uh one of the experts in the state on, on our wells. And um, not only do, do, do you need to test, you know, your water for the things you might expect like uh coliform bacteria, uh, but you should also test for lead. And even if you don't have a well, you should just test for lead. Um, uh, particularly if you have an older home, cuz it, you may have a, a lead solder. And in this particular area, Burnsville, where you have high le- levels of uh radon. In fact, uh, in a prior uh sampling uh of homes, sixty-five percent of the wells had uh, had uh radons, uh radon levels that were above recommended. So the pitch here is that if you didn't pick up your well testing kit uh on Saturday, you can still do it. And this is at a heavily discounted price. It's uh sixty, sixty dollars for the basic, twenty-five dollars for lead. And I think another fifteen for radon. But um, you give between eight and ten on the twenty, eight and ten in the morning on the twenty ninth, you can come down to Borough Hall, you could pick up the kit, and if you can, then get your water and bring it back the same day before ten AM, you can still uh avail yourself of this uh, of this opportunity. Uh, we, we talked about the dam, um, the, we, the next thing we talked about were rain gardens. Uh, we're uh moving forward to uh excavate uh for installation of a rain garden at, at the library. And that'll take place uh in the latter part of May. Um, then we're working on uh, trying to create uh educational opportunities for people who may want to uh, uh, develop a, a rain garden on their property. And we've uh applied for a grant uh, uh, that we'd be able to have some sort of rebate program um, uh, for, for people who want to install a rain garden. There's an interesting program that we've been doing, and uh, uh, thank you to Kathy Redling of our Public Works Department for getting a grant to help support this. Um, but uh, as you may know, that Styrofoam containers will be prohibited effective uh next May. So we've been working with all the uh food uh establishments, uh food service establishments in the borough um, to look at what they've been using for takeout or for uh um, uh, services in, in, in their uh restaurant or establishment. And then uh, if they're using something that's not ecologically or environmentally friendly, we've been able to give them samples. Uh, and then uh, if they like it and it works, we'll be able to give them actually a hundred free samples. And a couple of restaurants have taken us up on this. This is a uh, 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 done in combination with a program that tried to encourage uh composting as well. So this has been really successful and hopefully it will pay off uh in the long run. Uh, and then lastly, we have had some vigorous discussions about, about alternative energy, both solar as well as electric vehicles. Um, we're, we uh have researched several grants that we intend to pursue in the future. But we will have a uh presentation at the next council meeting on May ten uh about our proposed. about our proposed e-vehicle and e-charger initiatives.
Okay, any other liaison reports? I believe.
Mayor, we do, you can just real quick on liaison, Joanna Hester, that was Tree, Tree Met. Of course, it was doing my work, so I have to, once again, punt to her.
Sure. Well, we get three main things. There's Mr. Pigeon King because they wanted to tweak our tree ordinance. And there was input from Renee Apuzzo, the Tree Conservation Officer and the Forester, Dennis Scowway, and all the rest of the members had an opportunity. I won't give you the details because that has to be polished and I think that'll be presented through Jack or another way. We also had representatives from the Girl Scouts for the Girl Scout, the Butterfly Garden, the Mayor's Butterfly Garden, the Tree Tree. So the Shea Tree is giving two trees. And so we discussed the best specimen and the best location. And last, we had the planning for just what Jeff and what Ed said, the tree giveaway. The Environmental Commission and Rowan and Headwaters piggybacked on it just the way we would if we could have had the e-waste, the electric e-waste, so we didn't do that. So that was the main topics that we covered with that report.
I just want, I know Anne Wazetter, who has been the chair for quite a while, is resigning and she has done an outstanding job and has made such a commitment to Shea Tree and she will be greatly missed, but we wish her well. And we have to find a replacement. I don't know how we're gonna do that. She has really been great, so she'll be missed. Thank you, Anne, if you're listening. Um, okay, we got all the liaison reports done?
I just have one more thing from Recreation.
Yes.
Just in case anybody asks for the the pool, we are expanding the adult workouts. It's gonna be the most robust adult workout program we've ever had in the mornings. That's gonna be out about the second week of May. You can pay an additional fee and not be a pool member for that. We do encourage membership. So that's gonna go along with the cyclocross. And we're really looking to get people in Burnersville fit outside. No excuses, you can do it through the rec department. So look out for Ed's adult workouts as well coming in a couple of weeks.
Right. Thank you.
Right.
Ed Suzuki.
Not Ed English, you're not doing that, are you?
So it's gonna be early this year, but if you want to start, maybe wet suits on. So there's the desire for getting in the pool this year. So we're gonna start them up early. Information should be out in a couple of weeks.
Any any plans to do Tai Chi anytime?
Oh, that's a, that's a good one. Maybe. All right, I'll put it on the list, Jeff.
Thank you.
Um, now, Ed, you're up for the sign for the
Yeah, well, I, does everyone know what it is? And we have a nice trail going at Round Top Laurel. And unfortunately, with the active trucks and dumping and so forth in the lot and then the perhaps the building of affordable housing on that lot, it's, it's gonna be almost impossible to find. And actually, Pat Hoagland said, I can't find it. Where is it? And, you know, and he's, he really knows his stuff. So we realized, oh, boy. So John McDowell came forward and he said he can put in a sign, procure it and get the whole thing done. And I sent some pictures of the borough. I don't think you need them on the website. But I, the feedback from everybody, even Peter Bernbaum, who's leaving town, unfortunately, and others has been positive. So I, I don't think there's anything else to say. It's just the sign is gonna be out by 2:02, so you'll be able to find that hiking trail, which is a nice one, very easily.
Terrific. That'll be a big help, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we get, can you put a bigger sign where the path actually starts? Because sometimes it's hard to see that.
Sure. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think in general, better signage for our paths, because I know walkability is something that we're working on, but better signage is something that I would support.
Great, okay.
Do we have a sign on the other end of it, where you come up on Laurel?
I don't think so.
Just curious as to whether you can enter from that. There's really no place to park.
Oh, you could. But yeah, but you know, you'd be, be hard to do. I guess, I guess we, well, okay, then we should really look at it, yeah.
Well, people in the neighborhood would know where.
They know, yeah.
Yeah. So they may not want it marked.
That's true, too.
Yeah. Great idea. Thank you, Ed.
Is there a dog waste bag? I guess a little disposal thing there as well. We've had that on some of the trails.
There is not.
Should we have one there, do you think?
Of course.
People do walk their dogs there, I know.
I don't know. Have we installed any of them? I know that was in our list for the open space funds to use for
They're at, they're at the Polo Grounds, the Polo Grounds.
It's very crowded and a lot of people there, but they've been installed on the trails, no. If we, if it was approved in the past, then I can see how we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, we probably should have one at the old Army Trail, too. I don't know if there's one there.
And, yeah, and, you know, that's the other point. And I think Kathy Redling may bring it up sometime, but it's not something we want to bring up all the time. But having someone remove it, as I, for instance, we found out up at the Polo Grounds just recently, the companies are not that swift that are supposed to be doing it. I think Jeff could fill you in on that, but I don't want to put him on the spot. It's not, it's not a high deal. It's not such a good-looking topic in any case.
So but to Jeff's point, I want to sort of make, making the statement to remind myself for new business, there is some conflicting language that we've discovered in the dog prohibit, whether dogs are allowed in certain locations throughout the borough, that there's a remnant from a 2006 ordinance that looks like it was tried to be changed in 2018. It's, and it's conflicting, so we'll bring that up in new business today.
All right. Thank you, Ed. That's a good initiative and it'll be a big help. Chad, you want to talk about the changes the Planning Board made to Stormwater?
Sure. Actually, just went to the the dog issue, so let me move back to the other one. Hold on one second. So the Planning Board did meet, as promised, on the Stormwater Management ordinance, as everyone's aware, I think it was a month ago. We moved forward the changes to the major Stormwater Management in compliance with the DEP in the state. The Planning Board then just did meet again around minor developments and what was required and or practical and or useful in the Planning Board's opinion in regards to minor subdivisions. And the primary change was a a redefinition of minor developments from personal dwellings to those that may be larger than two-family dwellings that would require a different requirement. So it was the opinion of the Planning Board at the time that owners of single-dwelling housing and two-family housing, while they were not obsec, they didn't, they weren't, they still had to maintain their stormwell, they still had to file the Stormwater Management operation. The annual reporting of such was felt less useful. And the annual reporting requirement was maintained for dwellings that were more than two-family and or any larger commercial dwellings that would fit into major development categories. And the ordinance submitted by Bob Brightley reflects all those general changes.
Yeah, I like, I like the wording on the, you know, that it's, it's the owner's responsibility when he sells the house to inform the new owner.
And we retained the right of the borough to, it actually was similar language that was recently passed with general property maintenance to, if there were issues that were noted, to remediate at the owner's expense.
Yes, I thought that was good language.
And true to the chat, Planning Board, this was a relatively long discussion.
Any comments?
Yeah, I actually had a hard time figuring out what the changes were because there was only one, I think, one sentence that had a strike through. And then I was looking at this and I thought, okay, I guess there's not much changes. And then it occurred to me, maybe some of the changes are in red. And I'm red-green colorblind, so I can't see, I couldn't see them. So actually, till then, I looked back at it and actually asked my wife. I said, is there anything in here that's red? She said, oh, yeah, this whole paragraph is.
Yeah.
So I think this really, I, I don't know what was changed. I don't know what we had from before and what we're having now. So what was left out, what was omitted? I was trying to find reference to what the role of the zoning officer was. I didn't see anything. And I, I, I really can't support this until, unless it's been reformatted and sent to us so we can see what, what it was before and what the changes have been made.
So that's a good point and I'll make sure that Bob is aware.
Tell him to do the changes in blue.
Yes, I'll have him reformat the changes.
Well, you can do it in bolder italics, but the point is, I mean, just, well, don't forget that 10% of American men are red colorblind. So, I mean, but, but the point still is, is even if we could see it, I think, I think it's important to, when you present a document that's now in a third or fourth version, that we be able to track those changes and you can't do that on this.
So I want to be careful that I don't misspeak, Jeff. So I believe the primary, so there is a strike through that was, was part of this. So if you look on page one of the document, which is in our page 157.
I mentioned there was one strike through, but then there's paragraphs that have been changed.
Yeah, and those paragraphs are mostly added because of the reclassification between the minor, the minor personal dwelling, singular or multifamily, and those that would not be a single multifamily. But I think your point is a valid one. I'll have Mr. Brightley do a more detailed illustration of the changes for council.
And what about the enforcement? I didn't see, I saw that there were the opportunity for the borough to take action if there was a safety issue that was not attended to. But I couldn't find in there what the role of the zoning officer was and how we're going to do enforcement, particularly if we're doing away with the yearly reporting.
Well, so enforcement, so I don't believe, Jack, if you're there, in our normal ordinances, we don't say how enforcement would happen. We lay, we sort of describe what the situation is and our enforcement or our zoning officer forces what's written, correct?
That's correct. There are provisions stating the duties of the code enforcement officer and zoning enforcement officer. And then there's a general penalties section, set forth in section 1-5 of the code.
But if we're doing away with yearly reporting, how are we going to know? I mean, somebody may not sell that house for 20 years, so they could be in violation for 20 years.
Possibly, yes. So and the issue, so this was a long discussion and I'm not the expert here, so I'm going to paraphrase things that I heard, Jeff. Some things that I heard, so storm wells very rarely fail was something that I think Mary and some brothers were talking about. And actually, they're meant to overflow at times when there are large storms, was another takeaway that I had. And sort of number three, a general homeowner didn't have the expertise to be able to evaluate whether it was successful or not. So that's why we removed the homeowner responsibility to do these inspections because we didn't think they could do it effectively.
Well, and we saw that we were all not even getting 50% return on the reports. Yeah, Tom, did you want to add something?
That, well, that's just that we were getting, we were getting very little compliance to begin with and we had no enforcement mechanism.
And Jeff, I don't think we'd ever had a history of a, of a individual homeowner of them failing. That was a question that I asked. And Tom, and Tom Brightley responded that he didn't think there was one. The major issue was, there was one circumstance where a property was transferred and it was not communicated to the new property owner.
I guess I just have a philosophical problem with saying that because we've had mediocre compliance, we'll just do away with the requirement. I think if we think the requirement is worthwhile, then, then we have to figure out a better way to get compliance. And as far as the homeowner being able to assess it, that's actually something you should be able to do. And I don't think it's that much of a technical problem that it can't be done. I think this is a significant deviation from what we previously had discussed and I think agreed upon.
So, so Jeff, that's where, that's where there's a difference of opinion. The Planning Board did not believe or in their opinion, think that there was a reason to do it.
I thought in our last discussion, we were all on that same line, that we felt it was too much to ask of a homeowner to be checking on that without a professional.
And the big issue was that at the Planning Board level, they did not think that there was a benefit to it.
I don't recall thinking it was that much of a burden to check it.
Yeah, we were talking, you know, that sometimes it's hard to lift or that, you know, you'd have to get your lawn people to do it or, you know, that's kind of what, I think it was Jeff Price was saying. And I, I thought we were feeling like, you know, this wasn't gonna be an effective thing to do, to ask them to do it.
So I mean, I'm more than happy to go back to Bob and have him do a more effective illustration of the changes. But this ordinance as it stands was a recommendation of the Planning Board, so we can choose if we want it.
The Planning Board's recommendations align with what the Highlands Commission recommends?
We're not in
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the Highlands Commission recommends.
We have not accepted their plan. We are not a member of their plan right now.
I know we're not, but I, but that doesn't mean that they don't have expertise.
Well, I think, I mean, as a practical matter, to Chad's point, I mean, I, I don't have ones. I'm not sure, when they fail, what happens? The overflow, is that what happens? I think I could see most homeowners forgetting one year and then years go by, not by, not by deliberately, but just forget it's even there until it fails. So, you know, if we're not getting compliance, it seems like a burden, you know, a road to nowhere.
Well, let's ask Bob to go back and show what's been taken out or what's been changed so that we can really evaluate.
And what are the incidents of failure of these things? I mean, is it a common problem or is it just something?
And if he could tell us, you know, what it, what happens when it fails? Like, what are the consequences of it not being reviewed every year?
So I think at this point, though, it would require an introduction for public hearing. No, so maybe we can introduce it, get the changes redlined. And then we can have a public hearing and further discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, unless we're, at what point can we change it, John, Jack?
Well, it, I, I think at this point in time, we're just talking about reformatted to show by strike through or whatever, the, the existing ordinance sections that are being deleted and the sections, the new sections. Now, we make amendments, if there's substantial amendments, we would have to make those amendments by motion at the public hearing and then continue the ordinance or continue the public hearing on the ordinance as amended. But we could introduce tonight because so far I haven't heard any substantive changes discussed. I mean, Dr. Hammond, I think, may make some changes, but
Well, I mean, I think the yearly inspection is, that is a major issue, does it not? I mean,
Yes.
Should, I mean, but rather than introduce it, which would mean then the next time we talk about it would be for public comment and for an up or down vote, why don't we get the information? I think the two questions that have been posed are good ones, you know, what, how, what's the incidence of failure and what happens if it fails? I mean, I think we should know that before we, we move forward on this.
Well, it's a practical matter and take the same amount of time to introduce at the next meeting and then have the public hearing at the following meeting that it would introduce tonight, have a public hearing amend and then continue the public hearing, really in the end, you're talking about the same time period. So whichever way you want to proceed.
Well, I'm guessing the information, those two key questions were not available to the Planning Board. Is that, is that correct, Chad?
I mean, Bob Brightley is our local expert and he was there at the Planning Board and he did answer those questions of which were considered and part of the deliberation to bring this forward tonight.
So then what happens when it overflows was?
So the, the point was it's supposed to overflow. And I don't want to use, because there are various people on the Planning Board that have different levels of expertise, so I don't want to use names. But, you know, a very important person, the Planning Board, talked about the fact that it's supposed to overflow, especially when you have large amounts of rate flow. That does not mean it fails and the failure rate is exceptionally low. Again, I'm paraphrasing, not quoting specific documents.
Gotcha, gotcha. I just, I don't know. I mean, it's
Yeah, this is not my
And it's just, I'm just trying to establish a cost benefit, you know, threshold for, you know, if it makes sense to, you know, the burden of putting in people makes that kind of sense.
Well, and that's why, you know, I'm reflecting the opinion of the Planning Board, which has the expertise, which I do not, that this was the ordinance to bring forward and the fact that they did not believe that yearly, while it was important that homeowners are aware and maintain them, that a yearly while it was important that homeowners are aware and maintain them, that a yearly, um, essentially, um, report to the borough was useful. Um, was there, was the opinion in their, in their minds. So.
And I believe that report was just a checklist saying that they, which doesn't mean they actually even examined it.
That's exactly right.
I do remember that conversation. I guess my concern here is that we, we know that stormwater management is an issue for our borough. We do know that, uh, if improperly done, uh, you know, we get significant erosion, which will have effects on our, on our roads. Uh, I think this is something we really have to get right. And, um, to say that it's the, going to be the homeowner's responsibility and, and, and trust that it's going to get done. When we already know that the, when, when they're required to do it, the compliance is poor. Well, that's just a recipe for it not getting done at all.
Let Tom answer. Yeah.
So one, just, just to, uh, remind everyone, this has to do with new construction. And so these new homes or new projects are now required to have these facilities, which they were never required to have before. So that's, those facilities are still going in. So there's going to be a net positive impact on stormwater management for these new places. But I just, I, I don't, uh, I don't have a, an opinion one way or another, whether we require minor or not. But I do have a, a level of discomfort by say, of saying something is required, but it's not really enforceable. That, that really puts staff in a very difficult position, uh, to, to, to put a responsibility on them that they can't go and enforce. Uh, and I think it opens the town up for liability as well, potentially.
Well, and that was the genesis of my query, as you remember, Tom. Uh, I'm of the same mind that if it, if you can't enforce it, should you question it? And thus, you know, the, the, the challenge that I posed to the planning board is, is there something that is important that's enforceable that we could put on the books? Um, the planning board came to the determination that that was not the case. And that it was probably the best course of action to go forward without the requirement for these two very specific purposes, single family and, and multifamily or two family dwellings. And that the issue that really had to be, um, number one, um, enforced and watched was those of larger dwellings. You know, you mentioned larger, um, sub developments that had, um, more requirements. So I mean, I, I, I'd like to, to, I, I, at this point, I mean, this has been discussed. Jeff, I, I fully appreciate your, your questions. I, I feel like those things were satisfied at the planning board level.
Well, can we introduce it? And in the meantime, get the, the remarked up copy and get the answers to those questions of.
Any, any council member can reintroduce, right? If there's a second, it'll be about.
So I, I'll move to introduce with the questions that, that, that Dr. Hammond's asking of the planning board, be asked of Dr. Brightly. Or Mr. Brightly.
Do you have a second?
I would like to ask if Jeff Price already has provided any input on this.
He did at our, our last meeting, when we last discussed this, that they, they really couldn't and they weren't, you know, they didn't have the staff or the time to go and check them themselves. So they relied on these reports that they got annually.
And he wanted to do away with those reports?
Well, I think he felt like it was not enforceable. Or, you know, it's just an owner saying, yeah, I, I checked.
Yeah. Jeff, Jeff said that, you know, if it stayed in place, we would do our best, but, uh, it's not ideal.
I mean, I would just like to find out what problem are we dealing with or what level of issues are these creating for homeowners? Or it, does the issue arise once the house is sold to someone else? Is the issue arising when your neighbor's property is flooding into your property? Like what's happening, I guess? I mean, the only instances that I've heard of are people telling me of neighbors who do not effectively manage their stormwater and it causes a problem for them because their home is located in a lower area.
But I think those are, so not managing stormwater is different than having a stormwater system that's malfunctioning.
Well, and if it malfunctions, it can impact your neighbors. But at that point, you usually have a complaint and when you have a complaint, then there's enforcement.
Then there's enforcement of the complaint.
Right. Which we've added the, the verbiage that is enforceable where we say, hey, you didn't do your, what you were supposed to do. So we're doing it and we're going to make you pay us back for it.
And, and that ultimately was, that ultimately was the thing in my mind, Christine, that gave the town the ability to act. Right? And allowed us to focus on what the issue was, is if there was runoff into somebody's property. Um, the, the borough being able to intervene. John, I think we, did you, did you, uh, get booted off?
I did. I got bounced out. I crashed out and I came, but I'm back now.
So I guess the question I have is, I'm sorry, if, if let's say that scenario should arise, we determine that somebody hasn't done what they were supposed to do and we go in and fix it, can we effectively do that? Without the, the homeowner saying, well, you know, who says that it wasn't functioning? I did inspect.
Well, that's, that's why we included the, almost the exact, and, and Jack, you can comment better than I can. The, the language that we included on the other enforcement ordinances to allow the borough to act at the homeowner's expense.
Right. Yeah, that language is in there.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what kind of proof would we have to furnish to say that the homeowner was not doing these inspections? If we don't ask them to do a report?
No, it's not. We wouldn't be looking for a violation for failure to do the inspections. It would be for having a malfunctioning system at that point.
Yes.
Right.
So I guess I would like to, to, to ask Jeff or whomever. Uh, is the person who determines if the system is malfunctioning and if that's something that's black and white. Like either it's functioning or it's not. And there's no way a homeowner could say, well, it is functioning. Who says it's not?
We, we, we may need Bob Brightley to go in, the borough engineer to go in and, and make that determination. If in fact, there's flooding problems on a neighbor's property.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, you would probably need some, one of our professionals to, uh, make that assessment.
Right. We, we may want Bob Bradley and Jeff Price to be present at the next meeting, whether it's for public hearing or for introduction.
Jack, under the concept that's proposed now, if a system is malfunctioning, then we have the authority to compel.
Yes, and I think that's the intent of this ordinance is redirecting.
Right. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to introduce. I don't have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
So what does that mean? Do we have three and one?
Yes, you've got three. So what that means is Dr. Hammond or anyone else can move to amend it at the public hearing. And if there's subsequent amendments, we'll have to continue the public hearing.
So we will have a public hearing on May 10th and in a few time, if we can get answers to the questions, um, either beforehand or by having Bob and Jeff at our next meeting, we will do that. All right. Uh, next 10C is a draft resolution, um, for autism awareness in Burnsville and, um, it's, can we at this point change it as Heather had said to autism acceptance instead of awareness?
Well, actually that's, that's part of the resolution actually mentions that, uh, uh, one of the, and there are several major autism societies that one of them has recommended moving from awareness to acceptance. So the acceptance, uh, language is in there. Um, it actually is, uh, that, that's a work in progress nationally. It's, uh, and I had a chance to talk to Heather about this before, beforehand. That's actually not what the week is actually formally officially called. Um, if we can call it, uh, we can do that unilaterally, certainly. I, I'm not, I wouldn't object to it. I just want to point out that the acceptance language is in the resolution.
And does this mean that we need to do something or we're just passing a resolution saying we're acknowledging it?
Well, it acknowledges it. It also calls on our, our residents to get educated about it. Obviously there's a program just tomorrow about that, that we need to educate about it. I think it's also informational. Uh, we have the highest prevalence per capita of autistic individuals uh, in the country here in New Jersey. Part of that is because we have, uh, we attract families uh, because we have such a high level of services. And so people, um, who have autistic family members will come and, and come and relocate to New Jersey. But naturally it's one out of, roughly, I think the number is one out of 54 individuals here in New Jersey. It's one out of 34. Um, so I think part of the resolution is, is educational. Part of it calls on, uh, our residents to, uh, to get educated and part of it calls on residents to be accommodating and accepting. Uh, so that means, you know, uh, to, uh, uh, increase our levels of tolerance and to, um, uh, e- employ adults with autism, et cetera. Um, so there's, there's no firm action item. It's a, it's more directional. I have talked to Heather. And I've also talked to, uh, Dr. Paul A. Bend, who has a, a, a medical office here in town, who, uh, he, he specializes in treatment of people on the autism spectrum, uh, about some of the programs we might be able to initiate here in town.
Would you like to move the, uh, resolution?
Uh, yes, I would. Um, let me get the language up here. I moved their ordinance, uh, excuse me, I moved the draft resolution concerning autism awareness in Burnsville. Be accepted at all with the formal language I have to say is. I don't know the, I don't know the resolution number.
It's 21 dash 103 and then just, and just to move it for, uh, adoption.
So I move, uh, resolution 21 dash 103 for adoption concerning autism awareness in Burnsville.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Amera?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we, I don't think, do we have any correspondence, Anthony? I don't believe we do. Um, any unfinished business? I know Chad has new business. Or is that, yeah, you had new business?
Yeah, I, I, I guess it's new business. Um, so there was a question about, um, whether or not um, dogs on leash were permitted on the non-playing services, um, at pol- at the polo grounds, because there was an incident there. Um, at, um, Kiwanis Field and at Clermont. Um, so being a public servant that now understands how our ordinance books work, I went and I looked. Um, and there were two ordinances on the books, one of which was, um, 591, which prohibits dogs in certain parks during certain time periods. And a conflicting ordinance, which was 5101, which, um, I'm sorry, did I read that number wrong? I just moved it off my screen. Hold on one second.
Did you say dogs not on leash?
Yes.
In the park?
I- in the park.
Oh, you said on leash.
So dogs are prohibited whether they're on or off leash. And Jack, if I'm misstating, because my computer screen just went off. Um, for, between these certain time periods of April 1, actually just came back on to June 30th, which seemed to be in, um, conflict with an ordinance that was later passed, um, that allowed them. Um, now knowing what we're trying to do with the polo grounds, um, what we're trying to do at many of our parks, it was my assumption that they weren't allowed, allowed on the, on the playing fields. But I thought that they were allowed on the non-playing services as long as they were on leash.
On the common, common areas.
Yeah.
I think we said they were allowed
Yes.
in the car, not the turf and not the two baseball diamonds.
Yep.
But the one pass there.
I, I will prepare an ordinance for the next meeting, who's tailing five dash nine point one, which is the older ordinance and really is inconsistent. As Chad said with five 10 one, which was adopted in 2018.
Yep. Is everybody generally in line with that?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, that's what people are doing anyway, I think, is pretty much what's happening.
But they're being asked to, to, to leave. I actually witnessed that myself when I was at the snack shack. So, uh, uh, it, I can see where it's a potential for conflict. Uh,
Well, it's not just at Kiwanis. It actually is also, was also at the polo grounds where there were some misunderstandings, that dogs weren't allowed in the polo grounds.
So I think we really do need to remedy that.
Yes. Yep. We'll have it at the next meeting for introduction.
How about the polo grounds? Sometimes it's difficult to the untrained or the, uh, to the, uh, inexperienced side. Where, where the one playing field ends and one another begins, because they're, you know, often not marked and I just, not saying it's right or wrong, but I could see a lot of, uh, gray area there in people's minds.
Yeah, it's a little difficult, the polo grounds, because the.
Kiwanis is easy, obviously. The baseball fields are fenced in.
The far fields.
But even so, I mean, the, the interpretation was whether or not a dog was even allowed at the polo grounds, which I think is contrary to what the council's wishes were in 2018.
Well, do you consider like the Evan Cow property, is that considered playing fields? Or?
It's not on the, it's not on the list of the 2018 ordinance. The, the, the 2018 ordinance is very specific. It includes Kiwanis, Rose Bowl, Clermont and Polo Grounds.
I would think it is. It's a playing field. So I just, I always assume.
For the polo grounds, once we acquired it?
Yeah, the programs.
But I mean, they're, they're playing fields, but they're not marked for anything specific.
So the old, the old ordinance speaks generically about the polo grounds and the new ordinance singles out the turf field.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, let's let, let's let Jack go through that and, and clean it up.
Yep.
I see, uh, Matt, it's not a public, uh, input yet at this point. Can you hang on? Okay. So we have any other new business? Okay, then I will open the public session. Matt, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Matt Neefsey, Nine Mine Mount Road, Burnsville, New Jersey. Um, just in regards to the dog ordinance, uh, on playing fields, it's been my interpretation and understanding that the reason that the previous councils over the years had banned dogs from the complex is because we've had children get bit at the Kiwanis Field, um, over the years. Uh, and that's been, and as being a, an individual who has been bit by a dog, uh, I know that the ramifications, uh, of a bite to a child or any individual for that matter can be quite grievous going forward in their life, um, from a scar or whatever. I don't think, I wish the council would, would consider keeping the ban in effect, definitely at Kiwanis Field through the playing season from April 1st until October 15th, uh, when the season ends at that complex. Between the little children, uh, coming in and out, uh, we've had dogs there in the past few weeks that haven't gotten along inside the complex. Uh, we've asked the families to remove them. And I'm only going by what the ordinance says on the outside. It's, it's, sign says no dogs permitted. And, uh, that's what I've always asked and, and tried to enforce. But I would appreciate the council's consideration on protecting the children at all costs and that complex, uh, as well as up in polo grounds. Um, it's just, you know, one child is too many for my, in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Um, actually that's a very good point is maybe during the season. We not kind of like the beaches do, you know, you can bring your dogs to the beach off season, but not during season. Um,
Well, that's what, I, I'm sorry, America, I thought you were done. That, that's what 591 does. Actually, they're not inconsistent. It's my understanding just 591 hasn't been enforced. 591 prohibits dogs in any areas of those four parks from April 1 to June 30. Uh, 5101 prohibits dogs on those playing fields at, at any time.
Does the sign say that? Does the sign have the dates on it?
I don't know.
One at Clermont used to, but now it's updated and it says, it just says no dogs. And I think when, when we were, um, voting on this in 2018, it had a lot to do with maintenance of the fields because there were, uh, issues with uh, the quality of the fields deteriorating considerably because there were people who were letting their dogs tear it up. Those were the words that were being used. So that's why we restricted the dogs only to Evan Cow, as you're called, like the,
Right.
The part beyond closer to the walking path to Orban. So like Jack said, it was clear in our head what we wanted, but I guess the, the specifics would be better at this.
Yeah, I, I think even that needs deliberation because I mean, we're, we're, you're now talking about putting a path right through there, right?
And Evan Cow field, I mean, that, they, they play soccer and lacrosse on that field.
Yep. I think, um, you know, the one thing that we should all think about and it's probably coming in our rec plan is some area where, which is fenced, where dogs can be off-leash fenced.
Yes.
And that's what we really need is a fence.
Well, I, I think some dis- discussion and decision. Well, I think some discussion and decision in regards to off-leash and on-leash too, because those are two very different circumstances.
Yeah, off-leash should only be in a in a fenced area.
Agreed.
Exactly.
But something like, you know, if you want to walk on the Old Army Trail with your dog, in order to get there from that side, you know, you can walk along the edge of the path and over. And, you know, but how do you tell people that? Like, don't walk across the field, you know, you can go around it. Or you can start at the other end, but if you come out there, you're still on Evan Cow. So that makes it, and we don't prohibit dogs on that trail.
Right. And a lot of residents have said to me that the unofficial dog park is Clermont and I can see it all day long, but it hasn't really been the case in most recent years. But historically, I guess you would say, because it's fenced, people would let their dogs run in there.
The other unofficial dog park is clearly Kiwanis. I mean, Greg DeGronprey and I have picked up more poop inside of the the fence than I care to admit. But I think the deliberation is is then what happens on the common areas.
Yeah, but you can't have an unleashed dog in a common area.
You can't have an unleashed dog.
Period.
Well, we we give another ordinance requiring that all dogs be leashed in public places. It's just a different section.
Yeah, and I think that's good. But maybe somehow they need to all be together or.
Yeah, and that's the other, these were separated by space and time in the existing ordinance. So this requires, Jack, in my opinion, some discussion and cleaning up.
You know, I'll put I'll put the various sections together because the leash law is under the dog section and the other two are under the parks section, you know, they were specific to parks. So I'll put all three together and we can look at them and talk about them.
Yeah, because I like Matt's suggestion of during the season, just no dogs. I think that's a smart thing to do.
And we can change the parks where that applies, if you want to keep that.
Okay, you know, Jack, you have your assignment.
Yep, it's a fairly easy one.
Okay, anyone else in the public which should be heard? I am not seeing anyone, so I will close the public session. Do we have anything for executive?
I do not.
No, Tom, nothing? Wow, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
This is becoming a habit.
I know, getting good.
I don't think I don't think we're ever going to go back to live meetings because I'm getting spoiled.
I'll move, we adjourn.
I'm going to give Ralph a rest on our time, too.
Yeah, right?
You have to hesitate.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we adjourned. Good night, all.
Good night, thank you.
Maybe this should be the Ralph hour. We call him up. Bye, everybody.